Would you please rise to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the minutes of April 1st to approve. Make a motion to approve the minutes. Got a motion by Tom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. All right, good evening. Standing room only. I like that. All right, let's start off with executive session summary. This afternoon, we had an executive session to interview individuals for both the town manager's position and the town planner position. I would like to make a motion that we make an offer of employment for the town manager to Mark Morgan.
Second.
I have a motion to make an offer of appointment to Mark Morgan, and I have a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll make the offer. See if he accepts. All right. We also had a discussion over the town planner.
I'd like to make a motion to offer Lisa Tournay the position of town planner.
We have a motion to offer Lisa Tournay.
Second.
Town planner and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of offering Lisa the position signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will make that offer. Swearing in a new officer. Halton.
Good evening. My pleasure to bring before the board tonight our newest police officer for the town of Danville, Derek Walkie and his family. If you guys in police come this way. Derek has recently completed the 40-hour pre-basic course and is ready to get started out on the road in his training and field training program. Tonight, we're going to swear him in. This is a ceremony that I've been a part of several different times during my career, and I've actually been at his spot a few times. So this is good for him and his family and for the town of Danville. Derek is brought with his wife tonight, I think. So she'll do a pinning, which is a kind of ceremonial thing, too, where she's going to pin the badge on him. Hopefully, she don't stab him. Clerk Treasurer Jenny Piercy is going to do swearing in for us.
Thank you. George, you can frame and do what you like. Welcome, Derek. Okay. Department of Public Works.
Mr. Nielsen in town board, I come before you tonight with a capital of expenditure. This is to install a new bed on truck number 11, which is the last big truck to have its bed replaced or a new bed put on it. And also, that would be a flat bed. And I have the second expenditure, which is the V-box for the salt to put in it. So the first expenditure is $21,413. The second for the spreader is $8,952. We have that money in our new equipment budget, and I would just like to get the board's approval to move forward on that.
Counsel? Ray and I met. Okay, do we need consensus, or do we need a vote? Okay, all in favor of approving the new expenditures for a new truck bed and a V-sander for the truck number 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I did that wrong. Try that again. You made, did you make a, did anybody make a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. How about a second? Sorry, jumped the gun on that, folks.
Second.
Now I have a second. Further discussion?
You look nervous, Ray.
Dennis? Dennis? Dennis made the motion. Tom, second. Further discussion? Let's take that vote again. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, you still got your truck.
Thank you.
Okay. Make sure we do it right, no matter how many times we have to do it. All right, middle school watering. Carol here. Hi, Carol.
Hello, everybody. How you doing? I'm here this evening because I am here representing Danville Middle School, Project Hawk. It is an outdoor lab facility, which started, actually, almost 10 years ago, and it stands for Habitat and Wildlife for Kids. I've been working with Laura Crosby, who is the agricultural teacher at the middle school, and in addition to having a certified wetland hiking trails, we have a shelter house and a lot of other facilities for kids, we are now going to install gardens. These are going to be raised garden beds, and she's going to tell you all about it, the concept behind it. And it is a wonderful project because it involves kids in increasing their educational experience, and it also is a community service project. She is going to be asking for assistance in watering these raised garden beds. She's going to tell you what's going to happen to the produce from these gardens, and they will be located in the outdoor lab. Laura Crosby is going to continue.
Hello. Thank you, guys. So with the school garden, we're, it's been in the plan and the vision of having a school garden for a long time, but this year, we're adding it to the outdoor lab. And it's called a school garden, but it's really a community garden in the sense that it's feeding the community. There is a really, really big need in Hendricks County, and so some statistics that we have is there's over 14,000 individuals in Hendricks County that are food insecure, which means that they don't have access or the money to be able to afford nutritious food. So, you know, not being stuck with ramen, we want vegetables and fruit so students and families can be healthy. And of that 14,000 people, a little over 50% doesn't qualify for food, for the food stamps or the SNAP program. So those individuals and families truly rely on food pantries. And so with our school garden, the idea is we'll be implementing the vegetables in raised beds, and then all of the produce will be donated to local food pantries such as Abundant Life or Shared Blessings and the other ones in the community. And what we really, really need is because there's a certified wetland on the outdoor lab property, we can't tap water from that because it'll destroy the wetland. And there's no source of water where that outdoor lab is, so that's where we need your assistance, be it in tapping into the city water or assistance with the water maintenance crew that goes around in the summer, any kind of assistance we need to make this a success. And the maintenance of the garden is not just coming from myself, but we're really going to be pulling in the community. So this is a community effort to feed those in our community so that our families can have access to nutritious foods.
Okay. Questions?
How would you access the water and how would you get it to where it is, to where you want it to be?
What do you mean access the water?
How close is water to your need?
Right now, the closest spigot from the school is, I would probably say, 75 to 100 yards. So realistically, like, there's no way to get, like, a hose out there?
Well, the situation is that there is no tap for us to attach. So there's a couple of options. One, that when the town square to, maybe, maybe they could swing by the middle school and spray it off. Or they're doing that, because, you know, if we could create a faucet that would go into that faucet, it's right along Lincoln Street, and it would be on the right. Wouldn't sign that said, "The outdoor lab, back in the back." Oh, that's what we do. With the watering, I'm waiting for Steve.
Have you talked to the maintenance or the school system about funding, running that water line to where it is, to where you want it to be?
Well, currently, our new maintenance person is on vacation. And doesn't get back until, I think he comes back tomorrow, so I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it.
I think we ought to hear from this man here.
I got wind of this, and so I was ready. The cost of watering those flowers, we pay those men $24 an hour. I am not in favor of volunteering my department for watering the garden. My men are hired to patch potholes, do sidewalks, and so on. In talking with the other department heads, and we have the support of all of them, we have a trencher, we have the water line, and through all the department heads, we have agreed to install a water line from point A to wherever they want it, put in a hydrant, and they can water their own garden from there. I am not opposed to helping a child out to teach them to water a garden. I've had a garden since I was 10 years old. Nobody ever came and watered my garden. I know what work it is to raise a garden, and I would be willing to go out there and volunteer with the kids and show them how to take a bucket and some water and water their own garden.
What would be the anticipated cost of doing what you just described?
We have it all in stock, Jim.
So only the labor cost?
Only our labor. It'd be a one-time thing, and like she said, 75 to 100 yards at max, and putting in a water line one time would be minimal to show the town's effort as far as pitching in and helping.
How many hours do you think that would take? How many hours do you think that would take?
The biggest part would be trenching the ditch, and with a trencher, that's not long. We'd have to call in line locates and have it all located and so on and so forth, but just like installing any other water line, and the water department would be the biggest contributor there, with the assistance of public work and whoever else needs to be there to help.
What kind of production on these vegetables are you anticipating? And how are you going to dispose of them or disperse them?
So what type of vegetables?
Yeah, that'll work.
So we're thinking of really just simple, green peppers, tomatoes, green beans, and all of those are going to be donated from the high school greenhouse. Mr. Hugie has said you guys can have whatever vegetables you would like, because this is going back to feed the community. So a lot of those high nutritious vegetables, so the greener the vegetable, the more vitamin A and vitamin C for the students.
So how many pounds of those vegetables would you anticipate during a typical season?
Our goal for the first year is at least 200 pounds over the summer. And then if, you know, this is a learning curve for a lot of us, so the next year, if we can get more, learn how to kind of work with the soil and work with the plants that we have to maximize the food production from the garden.
How many students are going to be involved in tending this garden?
So this isn't just limited to students. So we're really pushing, we're going to have a cleanup day in May where we're going to install the gardens. They're going to be galvanized steel raised beds, and there will be roughly 75 students with some community volunteers on that day to help install things. And then over the summer, what we're planning is, again, this isn't, we want students involved, and the goal is to get students, but also community members like ourselves, because we want adults working with students and teaching students, how do you grow a garden? How do you raise vegetables? And there will be work nights throughout the summer, towards the beginning of the summer, when there's not a lot of vegetables growing yet and just maintaining the garden to make sure there's no weeds, there will be weekly work nights, and we're thinking around Monday evenings for an hour, so from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., around there. Anybody in the community, come help work in the gardens. I'm really pulling this community together and utilizing a garden that is helping, helping our community. We're involving the community, so it's a win-win situation.
What's been the commitment from the students at this point?
At this point, communicating to student council members that this garden, this outdoor lab, is becoming a thing and getting their interest, getting them, you know, follow, getting the students to follow us on social media, as cheesy as that is, so they have access to when those work nights are going to be and kind of getting to know the garden and the outdoor lab, because it is a lot of very brand-new stuff that we're bringing to them. And we've been working, I've been working since September, and now the ball is finally starting to get rolling. So talking to the students in school, talking to the high school students, communicating with all of the staff, hey, we have this garden, we want to utilize the students, and potentially having educational value where in the fall, when, like, August, September, when vegetables are still in the garden.
A harvest.
Yes, having still the work nights, but then if students, if teachers want to run an experiment or study, study the vegetables, study the growth of the vegetables, you know, how much does this pepper grow, and do math and things like that with them. But the idea is on those harvest nights, the vegetables will then be taken to Shared Blessings or Abundant Life, depending on.
Okay, I understand that. What's been the backward experience of student participation in what you've had prior to this?
Carol, can you, this is, I'm new at Danville.
Yeah. I installed the outdoor lab in over 200. It put out lots of lights, capable task. This outdoor lab has been used.
I was just interested in the commitment from them and the participation during a 10-year period. Is it something that they, they are instructed or encouraged or committed to, and they're there when work needs to be done? Or do you have to go find adults to do the work?
I've, on my end, I know when, there's been the word getting out about the garden, I've had students come to me saying, "Mr. Crosby, we hear about this garden, like, how can we help?" I mean, several times over several weeks that students are wanting to help, and I'm like, "Guys, it's coming, like, it's coming." And so now we have the opportunity that we've communicated to students, and I said, "Guys, we have this workday, we have these work nights," and they come running. They want to help. Kids want to be outside, I think, as much as, you know, we think that they don't. If they have the opportunity to go outside and, you know, get their hands dirty and work outside and kind of, it doesn't feel like work to them if it's a fun atmosphere.
Do you have to do anything special to have those products approved by the state for consumption of whomever you're going to give them?
We're working with Stephanie Simke, who is our district, our corporation, food services person, so she's shared those laws to make sure that the food is safe for the consumers because we don't, we don't want to put a bad product with our, our families and the community. So we've worked with her and our master gardeners, who've been really good about, you don't want this type of soil, you don't want this type of raised bed, because you don't want the potential of contaminating the food. So having those experts.
I guess my question is, are they going to have to be inspected? Or is there any particular rules or criteria that you have to produce those for them or make available to them that fits the state requirement?
The vegetables from our end will, will clean them before they go, like, will rinse them off with water before they go to the food pantry, but other than that, they won't have to because no chemicals are going to be put on the vegetables beforehand.
So you can mark these organic?
I mean, I have to look up the organic certification. I don't.
All right. No, I'm done with the questions.
Okay.
I ask a lot of questions, but I've asked enough.
Any other questions? Go ahead, because I may be asking the same question.
I think what staff's recommending is, we're seeking consensus from the county. We've worked with the school system. Obviously, there's a lot of questions. One way or another, we do believe we have a lot of materials in stock, ready to go. Obviously, we need to work with the school, Dr. Schaefer. We've got to identify that, one, these are on federally protected wetlands, if I'm not mistaken, right. And so we've got to be very careful about where we trench, we progress into that. There's obviously some location issues as far as there, as opposed to committed or married there to that idea, to maybe other locations where it may be easier to bring in the water line. So we'd like to work with them. We think it's a great idea. I think we all believe that it's a very worthwhile cause. It's just, before we commit one way or another, at least, best fit.
Does that sound good to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have consensus from the council to let the town management work with Laura and Carol and the school, plus Public Works, water?
Yes. Thank you.
You guys hammered out. Thank you.
They're in deep. They're in real deep.
They could have thrown parks in there, too.
They're, they're in, they're in deeper than they know. So they have the community garden.
Oh, I did, I did have parks on there. Sorry, Will. All right. Office 365, IT Committee. Will?
I brought this to you guys last meeting. Jenny has looked over it. We're good. My only request with it is that you, if you do, say, okay, that I'd like the threshold to be higher, knowing that I'm going to be less than that, but the, the quote is for the base model, and some of the department heads and others will have to have a little bit higher status as far as memory and things. So I'd like to kind of go in with, so we're going to do a $1,500 training. That's a one-time training to work on, working in the admin office, I realize that the shared folders, we need to reorganize how we function with shared folders, so we're going to work on that, and then some other features that you get with 365. And then there's the one-time setup fee of $3,900, and that's to get all of us migrated over, and then annually, not to exceed 10,000. But I believe it will be lower than that. And so right now, your quote's for like 6,000 and some change, but that's everyone being at the base email model. Some of us use email a lot more than others. And then there's the option of office apps being added to your desktop, which, that's another feature department heads, I think should have that option on there. So I had about 8,000 to 9,000 is what I think it's going to be, but I want to say 10, knowing that I won't have to come back to you and ask for more money. Corey Kaler is here, too. If you have any detailed questions, you can probably answer them, but I can answer a majority of the questions. And one of the biggest savings is our exchange server is outdated, and it's going to be a $30,000 upgrade. So this is a way to kind of modernize what we do and to not have to pay that one $30,000 upgrade. Plus, it gives us 10 times more features. We have memory storage, we can share across, you know, datas, we can have live, we can have live documents, which is great. We can auto-update them, we can share them across different ways. 365 is, everyone's going to be in there in the next two years anyways. We just, and we're kind of two years late, I guess I would say, but we're getting there. So this is a project that the IT committee's been working on for probably two and a half years, and just kind of everything's going together good now, and we're requesting that we move forward with the project, if you guys are okay with it.
So you're requesting $10,140, those are the licenses and the implementation? And you think it might be lower?
So I'm saying the annual fee would not exceed 10,000, and then there's a one-time 1,500 and a one-time 3,900. The 1,500 is not on there.
What's that total?
So that total is, let's see, 54, so 15, 15,400.
15,400.
Yeah, not to exceed, knowing that I will spend less than that.
And where, what fund are you tapping into?
I believe we said where the IT is and the host.
So it's host technology, hardware and software?
Is there sufficient?
There are.
When do you think we're looking at this $30,000 bubble coming through the snake?
We already need it. We're already kind of behind the time. This is one of those processes that we look, we fixed the network room, now we're looking at some of the pieces, and I think we have some retirement of some blades in there, and there's some other detailed things that are, yeah.
Good evening, members of the council. Most of you know me, I'm Corey Kaler from One Choice Technology. One of the driving forces behind this upgrade is Microsoft recently announced the end-of-life for Microsoft Exchange 2010, which is the version you're currently on for your on-premise email and unified communication system. That end-of-life dates January 14th, 2020, so you'll no longer receive any kind of security updates, patches, anything like that, so basically, you'll be flapping in the breeze from a security perspective after January of next year. So there's a couple of different options that you can go with. You can look at a new exchange solution, so that would require a new server, new, new version of Exchange, because you're four versions behind. There's been no investment in keeping that software up to date thus far. And after analyzing the costs associated with that, it seems clear to the members of the IT committee and us that moving to a cloud-based solution and looking at a yearly cost puts you in a position of more predictable cash flow, budgetability, puts you in a position of, we're trying to move hardware out so that you don't have to care and feed that hardware back here in the server room. The more stuff that we can move out and get you into, into a cloud environment, the less potential for disaster you guys have, and the less potential you have for emergency, emergency situations where you have hardware failures and issues due to power outages and all that kind of stuff. So we're kind of moving toward trying to get everything out of here into the cloud, and this is just another step in that same direction.
So does the cloud then become the backup, the single-only backup?
So you have a, you currently pay for an enterprise backup solution from us, and that enterprise backup solution is, will do a cloud-to-cloud backup of your new Office 365 environment. So you shouldn't see any changes in the, in the backup solution and costs that you're already paying for the backup solution. It'll just be migrated from a physical server to a cloud backup scenario, if that makes sense. So we will have, all the data that's in there in your email system will continue to be replicated to a different off-site location for disaster recovery purposes, as we are doing now.
Walk me back a little bit on this 30,000.
So first of all, full disclosure, that, that number is kind of pulled out of the air. It is estimate, educated estimate. We haven't actually priced a new server and priced the. We haven't actually priced a new server and priced the, the software and priced the labor to, to do the migration. And the reason we haven't gone down that road is because no, none of us want to do that, I don't think ultimately. But the, the current server that you have now that's housing your Exchange server and the Exchange software itself was put in when this building was built roughly 10 years ago and hasn't been updated in, at all in that time. So it's, the server hardware is end of life and it's at the end of its expected usefulness. And then the license, as I've already described, is actually, the software version itself is end of life as of 2020. So you're looking at replacing the, the hardware and doing so in such a fashion that will have redundancies and the processing power to handle the newest versions and those kind of things. So you're looking at a significant capital expense on the hardware itself, and then you're looking at a significant expense to purchase the new software version, none of which you have to do if you go to Office 365. The other thing that's worth mentioning about Office 365 is you have the ability to purchase, in, in addition, which plan, do you have the paperwork they have in front of them, so I can reference it? The E3 plan includes Office, includes Office desktop applications. So right now, you're spending approximately, you're spending approximately $360 per PC for government license to purchase Office for those computers. So that'll be an additional savings or an additional offset to this cost. Every time you buy a new PC and it needs Office on it, you spend around $350, $360. And then to keep that on the current version, you spend around $200 a year. So as you can see, the Office E3 license is only $240 a year per person. So you almost get email for free. It's kind of, you almost get Office 365 for free if you buy.
That's not Office software.
Yeah, Word, Excel, PowerPoint.
And we'd all be on the same version. Like, I'm operating in there off 2010, and I have like 17 or 16 in my office.
And 19's the current version.
Yeah, and every time you change computers, it's like, oh, you need to update and import.
So with the Office 365 E3 license, and that's kind of what he was talking about, is some people will need the full versions of those applications. The E1 license comes with an online version of, of Office applications, Outlook, Exchange, Word. And that's suitable for most applica, most people, most basic users. So the people who need the, the larger version, instead of buying Office outright, as you're doing now, it would be much more financially beneficial for you to look at the E3 license and actually purchase that, and then you get the Office 365 included with the Office application you're already paying for anyway. So that's really an offset of cost.
How many licenses is there?
It's pretty much 130, but that's where I, I think it'll probably be less than that. We're estimating on the high side so that we can.
Yeah, I think there's still some discussion and decision to be made about, okay, exactly who gets an E1 and who gets an E3 and who gets an F1. And some of those, I think the reason why we're asking for a little bit of a buffer is because when we've done this with other customers, they thought they would be okay with the E1, and then here comes this report from the state, and it's got macros in it or something, and they have to have E3. And we didn't know they were going to have to have E3. So there will be some of those things, and that's what the buffer is designed for.
We thought, well, everyone with the base model, and then you'll know by complaining who needs to move up for departments.
Right.
That way, everyone's covered, and then we can just grow. I mean, we kind of know some people who are going to need more, but for the most part, I mean, a lot of people will be able to give away the base model, save us some money.
Any other questions? All right. It's the will of council. Want to approve this?
Make a motion, we approve this expenditure for this upgrade.
All right, we have a motion to approve the upgrade of, up to $15,400, is that correct?
Yes.
And Tom, second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Let's get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
What, what's your timeframe?
Before January 14th, 2020.
Works for me.
I think we're looking at, yeah, we're looking at about three months.
Okay.
The next three?
The next three, I hope so.
All right. For Treasurer.
I come before you with Resolution 9, 2019. This just reestablishes our CCD rate, which is an annual requirement by the Department of Local Government Finance. The rate is the same. It will not exceed .05. And I just need approval for Resolution 9.
All right. It's the will of the council. How do we feel about Resolution Number 9? Doesn't sound very good.
Make a motion, we pass Resolution Number 9.
We have a motion by Tom to pass Resolution Number 9, 2019, Resolution Reestablishing a Cumulative Capital Development Fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Chris. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 9 is passed.
Thank you.
Well, we're at it. Talk to me about attorneys.
I bring to you guys a proposal. In meeting with TAF Law, we've had, we have several different things going on, and we feel like the time has come that maybe we go back to having an attorney at every council meeting. We did that several years ago and did away with it. Now we think that it would be a good time with the new town manager, that we have representation at the council meetings. We call for several little things throughout the day that end up costing us more than it should if we were under an agreement, annual agreement for a set fee. So I bring forth to you this proposal that we would sign with TAF Law. It's $36,000 annually. That would include for a attorney from their law firm to attend every council meeting, and they would assist us with resolutions and ordinances and daily operations of the town of Danville. Now annexations and bond proceeds, the agreements for those would be at the TAF's current rate of $250 an hour. And if we got into employee issues, that would also be a billable charge. So I really just wanted to present it tonight for you guys for consideration to come back in May. You can call myself or TAF Law. Jewel Lee is head on this with any questions.
Do you feel like this would be a cost savings to the town?
I do. I feel it would be very beneficial to go back to having an attorney here. I was here during, of course, the Kevin Dogan days. I think that was very beneficial. And I think that their knowledge we need in the daily operations and with the change in management team altogether, I, I recommend it, and I feel it would be very beneficial. And I believe, well, we'll see that we will ultimately save money with our annual cost.
What was our annual cost last year?
$56,000.
So does this include all council meetings, all executive sessions, regardless of the number of hours? It's not capped out at X number of hours?
Correct.
Does it mean all?
Correct. All council meetings and all executive sessions. If they, you know, of course, like I said, planning meetings and things outside that scope would be billed at the hourly rate.
Including all special calls?
Okay. This covers our attendance at all council meetings and special calls and executive sessions.
Correct.
Are you moving for consensus, or do you want us, so that you can move forward with tool and come up with a contract?
Yeah.
Okay, what's, what's the pleasure of the council here? We're just looking for consensus. Okay, move forward.
Thank you.
I will say that when I was on council earlier, and we did have the, the attorney president, it made it pretty easy. I mean, some days, he didn't have anything to input, and other days, when we had questions, it was great to have legal right there rather than say, we'll get back. Okay.
Very good.
Come back and let us know what it's going to, what the.
Absolutely.
What it's going to look like. Police CSI salary ordinance. Jim Hilton.
I'd like to introduce, just for your consideration tonight, a job title change from our police clerk to make a crime scene investigator job title switch, and also salary range, maybe an increase in that as well. So this is just a consideration for you guys to review and to talk about. We can come back to this at a later date.
Okay, then we'll mark that this has been introduced, and we can, we'll visit this back at our next council meeting.
Introduce ordinance number, please.
Okay, so ordinance number 14-29 is introduced, and ordinance to amend, ordinance 25-2018, the 2019 salaries and other compensation for officials, employees and appointees of the town of Danville.
Thank you.
Thank you. Plan Commissioner, Lisa.
I'm here tonight to bring three rezonings that went before the Plan Commission on April the 8th. The first one of which is ESWI Properties located at 167 North Cross Street, and they're going from a residential 2, R2C, to a light industrial, I'm sorry, industrial light IL. They did receive a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission with written commitment that no wireless communication facilities would be permitted. The vote was four to zero.
And so this goes with ordinance number 11, 2019, and ordinance of the town of Danville Can either introduce this tonight, or you can suspend the rules and act on it?
Question. When you do this, do you have to put a sign up on that property, say you're changing it to, like, that's true?
There is no requirement to put the sign up. You mean, for the public hearing?
With the neighbors, the people around the area, no?
They get notification if they're within 660 feet or two property owners.
Was there any pushback on that?
We had one letter from one concerned citizen about boys' payment. They were concerned. Maybe there was a little too much. Property managers have agreed to put a fence in there. Parking issue, which we addressed with the respondent. There's a dumpster parked in the alleyway which pre, there's.
Okay, so we, do we want to suspend the rules tonight and deal with this, or shall we just hold it for introduction tonight? Go ahead.
Anybody in the audience have any comment about this?
167 North Cross Street. I'll take that as a no.
I need to make sure, Lisa, do you have it for signature tonight? Do you have the ordinances printed for?
Actually, no, I don't. Just what's in your packet is the only thing. Is that what?
We just let it stand, is introduced. Ordinance number 11, 2019, an ordinance of the town of Danville zoning certain territory 167 North Cross Street has been introduced. We'll deal with it the next meeting. On a roll, don't stop.
All right. The next one is SNE Investments. It is located at 502 West Main Street. Jeremy Elmore, on behalf of SNE Investments, actually. They are going from an R2C, which is the, yeah, residential 2 central, to the GB, which is general business. They received favorable recommendation, four to zero, with written commitments, and those are attached in your packet. They, they have stricken some uses from the GB zoning district that would technically be allowed, so they are removing those. And we did not have any remonstrators at that meeting.
Okay, once again, our, our options are to suspend the rules and deal with ordinance number 12, 2019 today, or we can introduce it tonight and deal with it on the next meeting. Introduced? All right, ordinance number 12, 2019, an ordinance of the town of Danville zoning certain territory has been introduced. All right. I want to go.
All right. Okay, sorry. The next one is application that was submitted for rezoning to a PUD on 20 acres by Arbor Homes. The current zoning district classification is residential 1. Like I said, they're going to a PUD. This is roughly 1928 10th Street. They received no recommendation by the Plan Commission as there was a lack of a unanimous vote. We had three, four, and one abstained. We did have several people at that meeting that were concerned about the proposal.
So where does this stand now?
Well, I think Mr. Munoz is in the audience, and I don't know if he would like to address the council or not, but if you so choose.
Absolutely.
All right.
That's public meeting.
Good evening, council. Again, my name is Paul Munoz. I am with Arbor Homes, and we're here to present tonight regarding Northwood Glen PUD. Tonight, we're here to talk about the Northwood Glen PUD, and wanted to start out by giving you guys a little bit of history behind Arbor Homes. We are the largest home builder in central Indiana. We build roughly about 14,000 homes since our inception in 1994, and we've had 24 years of service serving central Indiana. We are still locally operated. Our president and previous owner is still in charge and still running the business and one of the few companies that were able to weather the downturn and continue to be able to grow and prosper and invest in central Indiana. We do quite a bit of projects with local communities as we come in, such as Habitat for Humanity, Hometown Hero Program, and we do work with the schools and also with local sports programs to help out any way that we can. We've actually already been approached by your local baseball league as far as trying to get sponsorship. So looking, looking forward to working with them. So a little bit of the due diligence, we did meet with staff on multiple occasions prior to us filing this, because we wanted to make sure that this was a good opportunity for Danville as much as it was for Arbor to, to come into town. And so as you can see from the PUD, we have met or exceeded quite a few of the architectural standards and general development standards for some of the recently approved and recently presented PUDs in front of you. So we feel that we have brought forth a pretty quality project and product for the town of Danville. We also met with Danville Schools, and I know that there was some concern regarding the statements that we made. And so Dr. Schaefer is with us this evening. If you guys have any questions regarding what this project potentially do for the schools, and if it has a negative or a positive impact, he did say that he would have the opportunity to come up and speak if you so wished. Did meet with surrounding homeowners to try to address any concerns that they may have, and also try to educate them on what we're bringing in as far as the project, lot sizes and specifics. Feel it's always better to reach out to those ahead of time, so they're given adequate information to be able to make decisions on whether or not they support or they're against the project. And also reviewing. And also reviewing the strategic plan and the Danville ordinances to make sure that we were in compliance with what the town of Danville is looking for in the future as far as product and placement. So there are two maps that you see on your presentation. One of them shows you kind of a little bit of a drawn-out version, 50,000-foot view to get kind of an idea of where it is in comparison to some of the residential that's currently around it. So it's not... we didn't leapfrog tons of property and go way out into the country to try to build a subdivision. We tried to stay close to where most of the action was, where most of the community is already at, where all of your infrastructure is, so you're not having to extend infrastructure very far to be able to access it. And then we have one that kind of is a little bit of a closer version, so you can see what's there. So, development overview, as she stated earlier, it's currently an R1. We are proposing a PUD. It's approximately 21 acres. It would be all detached, single-family homes. The number of lots is roughly about 66, and that does leave for 25% of the open space, which is what is required by your PUD. Development standards, average lot size is about 7,900. Minimum lot width is 60, and we do have side yard setbacks of five and 10. So, to give you a little bit of an overview on what that means, is that our average product is a 40-foot wide product, and that gives us the opportunity to be able to put two-foot, four-foot bumps, third-car garages, increase the square footage opportunities for the buyers, which is where they seem to find more value whenever they're purchasing a new home, is the square foot and the inside interior amenities. So what you're gonna find is that roughly about 30%, 20 to 30% of our overall products, our overall buyers are looking for a third-car garage. So not every home is gonna be set at a five-foot and a 10-foot setback. You'll have some. If it's a standard where you'll have 20 feet, 10 feet each side, a four-foot bump, you're gonna have eight feet each side. Provides a lot of variation as you're driving down the road. So in some of the other subdivisions that were recently approved, you're gonna find that every single home is gonna be exactly 10-foot apart. You're not gonna see that in ours, because the products are gonna change, and we've given a lot of width for those to be able to buy exactly what they feel that they want, which could be a bumper, it could be a full-third car garage.
What's the cost?
Do what?
What's the range, price range?
Sure. So we figure that the average price range for this subdivision is gonna run probably between 175 to 225, on average. You will see a sign out front that's probably gonna say, "Starting in the 140s," because we, as a builder, are about the first-time buyers. We feel that that's very important to us. Maybe your first move up, it's your workforce housing for your police, your fire, and your employees for the community and for the town, and young professionals potentially coming in. So, a little bit more about the concerns that we had addressed to us as we were going through the process, and we met with the neighbors. And drainage was one of those concerns that we had, and I actually have our engineer here with us to answer any questions you may have if you want to get into some of the technical side of it. But state law, IDEM codes, everything that goes into building one of these when you get into your construction plans and are permitting, we cannot have an adverse effect on the properties that are around us. Just not allowed. Everything that we do has to meet certain permit requirements. And so, we are looking at all of that water that runs off of the farm field to the north and runs through this field and across to the east through that drainage. We're gonna be detaining that, and also everything that's currently on our property, holding that for a period of time and releasing it at a slower rate. We've actually been working with one of the neighbors to design that outfall from that pond accordingly to be able to have less of an effect on him and his neighbors as far as any ponding or standing water that normally happens in that area. Excuse me. In that area, we will be controlling that and alleviating those problems for those properties. The other one was a traffic concern at the intersection that's just down the road, and I believe you guys have in there the traffic report that was... we had done by A&amp;F, which is a third-party company, engineer. And with that, they found that the current status of those, that intersection, was an A rating, which is the highest rating you can have. And after our subdivision were to come into place, which should take probably about two or three years to completely develop out, and all the homes were in place, that rating would not change, even at peak hours. So your optimal conditions for that intersection are not gonna change. And we did have some concerns that there was another subdivision coming into the area just down the road, and whether or not this study took into effect that subdivision. It did not directly take into effect that, but as part of the traffic study that's done and the future forecasting that takes place from, I believe it's ITE, if I'm not mistaken, it's their trip count calculations and software that they use, it does take into a certain amount of growth over a period of time. So a portion of that subdivision would have been considered in this for future growth in the area. Did have a concern regarding mailboxes, and we did agree that all of the ones that would be displaced by us putting in our entrance and our XLD sellings, we would move and take care of for those homeowners. And then the other thing was, the surrounding property owners wanted... had some concerns. And so, what we typically try to do is if we're looking at a property similar to this, is put what they call a tree preservation area all the way around the property. And so, any of the existing trees that are not dead, dying, decaying, or invasive, we try to preserve. We want to try to keep that natural barrier between existing uses, existing homes, and our newer subdivision. And then we also look at anything that might be just right off of the fence on either side. If one of the neighbors has an issue with a dead tree, we already have a crew out there. We might as well try to take care of that while we're there, too. And then any areas where there might be breaks within that, we go through and try to install... excuse me, install, but plant new trees to try to continue to keep that barrier there within that tree preservation area. So we're being responsible neighbors to the people that are around us. So, just a little bit of... as you look, there's two other slides that are to the back. One of those is... gives you a comparison with what I said regarding the side yard setbacks, just a pretty simple drawing showing you that standard house is gonna have quite a bit larger setbacks and be separated from those homes. And the last one gives you a comparison when it comes to the other two PUDs that were recently approved and presented to you guys earlier in the last couple of months. So, kind of as a recap, we feel that lot size setbacks and product standards that we currently have are all kind of superior to some of the things that have recently been approved through the community. Drainage improvements are going to take care of some of the standing and ponding water that's currently in the area. We're gonna be able to control that and really set at a lower rate to have a better positive impact on the surrounding homes. Schools, again, like I said, Mr. Schaefer can speak to that if you guys would like to have more information. And then I believe we've addressed the traffic through that study. And if you look at the very last page in that study, it states that as Northwood Glen is built out, you're going to see roughly about a .5 second or a .2 second delay at that intersection once the homes are currently in place at peak hour.
You mean if they stop completely?
Five seconds, that's .5 seconds, as far as the delay.
Are there sidewalks proposed for this?
We would be installing them along the front of the road, and it would be all the way through the subdivision.
What size will they be?
Be four-foot.
Are there any pocket parks designed for this? Any sort of recreational trails or anything?
No. We had talked with Laura previously about working with the town council, looking at your current park impact study, and seeing if there were any deficiencies that the town felt were an issue, that maybe we could work together to make an improvement to one of the local parks in lieu of having a playground piece within Northwood Glen.
How many anticipated children would be in this 66-house unit?
So, I would... I'd like Mr. Schaefer to answer that one for you, because what I thought was a statistic, he quoted something a little bit differently, and I know he's a little bit more professional at that than I am, when it comes to the students.
Dr. Schaefer, could you address that?
Yes. As far as the number of students, we are, right now, we're undergoing a demographic study for the school district and beginning to get some of those numbers, but I can only speak for the growth effect for the schools, not necessarily for the town. But I would tell you, the schools, we need steady controlled growth. We can handle that. Dollars follow the child now in terms of school funding, and for Danville schools, that's about $5,700 per new child that comes into the district, or for any existing child in the district. And if I use the example of 200, if you had 200 new homes, rough counts that have been done in Avon, and initial counts here in Danville, would indicate for each new house, we're gonna pick up approximately half a student to one student, about a half a student typically. So for 200 new homes, which is a lot of new homes, we're only gonna get about 100 kids. When you spread 100 kids across 13 grade levels, that's an equal impact of one child per class per grade level. It's not very much. But that 100 students, which would occur probably over two to five years when you talk about a housing division, that will raise $570,000, and those dollars are the ones that pay our teachers and our instructional staff. That allows us to hire more teachers, allows us to increase the pay of our teachers, and that's why we need growth. Schools today are either growing or they're dying. And new students each year on a steady continual basis, you get behind in terms of your ability to fund. And the other thing about growth is it increases your assessed value. And when you increase your AV, that's good for your schools, that's good for your town, that's good for your taxpayers, because it spreads out that debt obligation cost. It lowers your tax rate. So good AV is good for the town, it's good for the schools as well. And great schools will give you great communities. I just want to share, because this concerns me. I got an email from our demographer the other day, and she's trying to finish her study, and I'll share this with you. And she says, "I've worked the forecast in a few different ways, and I just don't see a path to growth, even with aggressive building scenarios. Without significant housing development, enrollments will not grow and perhaps will decline." That concerns me. And I'm aware of the pending housing out on 10th Street between 300 and 450. I'm aware of the pending housing development on East Main Street just south of that, but I haven't seen any groundbreak on those yet. And I try to look two, three, five years down the road, and even if we do get a couple homes from all three of these divisions put together, it's only gonna give us about 30 new students a year, based on what our demographer is telling us right now. So, again, I'm not for explosive growth, but good steady controlled growth that you can bring in a little bit at a time certainly makes sense for our schools. I think it makes sense for our community, and we have to answer any additional questions you may have.
Does the average price of the home going up affect the number of students? In other words, this is an average price of, would you say, 165, 175?
Yeah.
How is that different from a 225 subdivision? Number of students?
That I cannot tell you. I can tell you, living in a division that has higher home prices, and there aren't many young children in it, there's a few. So usually your starter homes, when you look in that 24 to 36 age span for young adults or childbearing adults, that's where you're usually gonna see typically more growth. And again, I speak hopefully on behalf of our teachers. Many of our teachers, especially our starting teachers, can't afford to live in a community. They want newer homes that are cost affordable, and that 140 to low 200s is the pricing... price mark they're looking for. I know, because right now I have one, I'm living in my own home, and I've got a third-year teacher in my home looking to buy a home in Plainfield, Danville, Avon, and he's gotta look in that 140 to 150 range. I know from a young teacher standpoint, affordable newer housing is certainly desirable.
Any other questions for Dr. Schaefer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for their engineer? Any questions for Mr. Munoz?
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Okay. Anyone, since we gave fair to Arbor Homes, I think it's only fair that we let the community members speak. Step up to the mic, tell us your name, where you live, and your concern.
My name is Robert Murphy. I live at 1917 10th Street, which would be directly across the street from this proposed addition. Last week, we had a petition with over 40-plus names on it opposing this addition. We have, in our neighborhood, mostly acre, two-to-three acre lots. Now they're wanting to go ahead and cram just a boatload in core grade blocks. It's not going to go with the community. Also, recently, I paid... I bought my house in May. I paid $262,000 for the house. They're wanting to put $140,000, $150,000 starting homes in there. Once again, that is not going to go with the neighborhood. It's, I'm afraid, it's gonna devalue my property. And when he was talking about the traffic study, it changed from last week, basically. Last week, he told us that it would be an A rating for twice a day, and then it would drop down. And so, suddenly this week, it's an A rating all the way around. I don't understand how it can change within, inside of a week. You know, they voted 3-0 to turn it down last week. I just would ask that you would go ahead and go with the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Members of the committee, my name is William Meister. I actually live here in Danville, but my question, because I am an avid fisherman, I enjoy outdoors, does any of your water run off to the 3D stream?
What was your question, sir?
My question is, does any of the storm water... does any of the storm water from this proposed PUD, once it's built, go into what they call a 303D impaired stream?
It does not. We do not have any impaired streams in the town.
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the community? Okay. Hang on. You're next.
Good evening. I'm Jay Hodge. I'm the current chairman of the trustees of the Danville Christian Church, and we currently own the property that this is being proposed on. I will admit upfront that I'm not a resident of the town of Danville. I've lived just outside of the city limits, but I've been an active resident in this community for a very long period of time, and I'm representing the property owner. Danville Christian Church owns the property to which this action is being requested. We came into ownership of this land in order to ensure that we had a place for a church secondary to the Hendrix County Commissioner's efforts to move the judicial system, if you recall, 11, 12 years ago. We were approached by one of those commissioners who discussed the purchase of our existing location at 180 West Main Street and the lot to the east, which now, as you know, sits vacant. Coincidentally, we had a member of our church pass away, left us a substantial amount of money, and that allowed us to purchase land to ensure our ability to continue our ministry. We searched and found this place. Without our knowledge, the town, the county council, and the school corporation did deals that ensured you guys moved here and gave the property that you own on the town square to the county. I don't know what the school corporation got out of it, but that... all those things took place, so we ended up with a parcel of land we no longer needed. It sat there for nine, 10 years, and we've used it to raise alfalfa, and a farmer has done that. Since that time, the church has had several different pastors who've had various ideas of our future. The current pastor, Ron Orin, who's been with us since July, he interviewed most of the congregants, and he found that there was no longer really a need for this property, and that funds from this site would serve our ministry better than alfalfa. So the congregation agreed to place the property for sale. A very short period of time, Arbor Homes approached us to purchase the property, and no other offers have been tendered. That is how we came here, but it's enough of history. I'm most upset that the plan commission acts without having a full board, and this is a process that's been going on for a number of months. They have vacant seats that aren't being filled. That has delayed our process at least two months, if not longer. I even questioned where the steps taken last Monday were legal. I do not believe that three members of a seven-position board is a quorum. While four members were present to conduct business, one of the planned commission members is a church member and recused himself from the vote, so in my opinion, the vote should not have even taken place and instead tabled to such time a voting quorum was present. I also want to remind the council that just last year, you voted and approved this strategic plan that was developed over many months of planning, public hearings, and meetings. Within that plan, one of the concerns was the need for affordable housing. Our policemen, firefighters, schoolteachers, and new college graduates need housing they can afford, and senior citizens like myself are looking to downsize. We are also looking to remain in the community, but we have to look elsewhere. There are no affordable houses for retirees in this community. There are no condominiums available, they're all taken. These... all of us have the right to the same American dream. These, all of us have the right to the same American dream that we all enjoy. And while I understand the concerns of the adjoining property owners, I believe there are ways to negotiate with Arbor Homes and reach an equitable solution. Housing growth is coming as witnessed by the large areas of development already approved by this body east of this location, and the rezoning of land northwest of this property. I suggest that all parties be proactive, meet and develop a plan that is agreeable to all, rather than wait on the wave of growth that is coming, whether you like it or not.
Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Susan Herskadal, and I live at 1991 10th Street. And I want to say thank you to the pastor there in presenting what he feels is important.
But unlike him, we live on the corner of 10th and 200, and we've been there three years. The first two weeks, there was an accident there, and I'm sure as a fire chief, you know how many accidents happen at that corner. Also, so I know they have traffic studies, and I don't know how they do these traffic studies. And honestly, unless you live there, you will see how many cars go by constantly and what can happen. What else I want to bring up, there is one access in and out of that subdivision, as far as I understand, for 66 homes. We're not against development. A lot of us that spoke last week, we're not against development, but you're trying to cram 66 homes into 20 acres where the subdivision Whisperwood across behind us, they're approximately a quarter of an acre each. So really, it's wanting to make more money on that land, that's the way we see it. And as far as being affordable, 20, over 20 years ago, my husband and I looked to live in Danville. We had three kids at the time. We wanted to come to the school district out here, and we couldn't. We couldn't afford it. And nobody had homes out here that worked for us, so guess what? We moved to Cloverdale, 35 miles away. My husband commuted every day to Indy. Our kids can't afford to live here. But now we've moved here after 20 years because we could afford it. It's not that I don't have compassion for people that can't afford it, but we moved to a neighborhood that we felt we could retire in and we enjoyed, and we could frankly afford it this time. So zoning to PUD is going to drop standards because they want to put that many homes there. And nobody bent over backwards for us or the other neighbors in the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So this is our seventh meeting, where I've stood in front of either a body like you guys, or I was at the original meeting with Arbor Homes. The, the, the planning board-
Sorry, did I hear your name? Did you?
It's Owen Miller.
Okay, thank you.
1780 10th Street. Just to the east, past of that property. So that's my field, dirt bike track there.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't prepare anything today because I was told it wasn't going to be a public meeting. I'm pretty sure Barry made some comments last meeting about architectural design, his concerns. And I'm pretty sure last meeting was a unfavorable recommendation for this, this project. Correct?
Motion was 3-1 for unfavorable. You have to have a unanimous vote for a motion to carry. They did not carry because they did not have a unanimous, or a majority.
So that changed after the meeting. At the meeting itself, they made a motion for unfavorable. So anyway, I don't have anything prepared today, but I did want to say, it's our seventh meeting. Not against housing, high-density housing, just wants to come in. Houses at R1 standard.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to be here all night, and you guys have spoke quite a bit. And I gave you the luxury of speaking at this meeting, okay? And I know you want to comment back on those comments, and then they're going to comment back on your comment. But what I'd like to do is get some clarification, if you don't mind, okay? And that is our last vote on the plan commission. And for those of you that haven't been there, one of the members, we've had a hard time getting a quorum. And then one of our, one of our members, Adam Harvey, attends the church and plays a role in there. I don't know if he's trusty, thank you. And so he has abstained from the discussion and the vote, okay? So we find ourselves in this interesting position of, at our last meeting, having four members out of seven, so by definition, we have a quorum. However, with Adam recusing himself on that vote, we now have three council, three board members to make the decision. The current zoning is R1, is that correct? Okay. And so that's where we stand at this juncture. So my question, because I'm not, I don't know how we, where we go at this point. I'm asking for some clarification, because I-
The council has, okay, or you can send it back to the plan commission. Or-
Okay, and the request is to go from an R1 to a PUD, which has higher density, okay? Or we send it back to the plan board, and hopefully, they will have a quorum and be able to give us a recommendation, either for or against, or with conditions. Is that correct? Did I say that correctly? Okay, so what is the pleasure of the council? We can't, go ahead.
I think it lighter what's happened. There are going to be people there, I think, who are going to send it back, archer board.
Is that a motion?
Make that motion.
I have a motion to send this back to the plan board and hopefully have a quorum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, further discussion. I sit on that board, and it is very frustrating that we do not have a quorum. All in favor of sending this back to the plan board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Send back to the plan board. Do we know the next date for the plan board?
May 13th.
Okay.
May 13th.
I think submission's on the date.
18th.
We believe it's a day-
Submission date.
Ray? Can you look on the board real quick? Can you look on the board real quick? Is it May 13?
Yes.
Yeah, May 13th. All right, folks, we'll begin on 13th.
The May 5th meeting, we should have a date to replace the next.
Okay. 13th. 13th. Hey, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock?
7.
7 o'clock.
7.
All right. Phew, that took a while. Recovery Beesley's, Chief Morgan.
Can you have anything for me? Okay. What this is, and we're, tonight, we're just going to seek your consensus. The Beesley's has afforded the cost of putting sanitary sewer to their recently annexed property. What this recovery agreement does is it allows them to recoup some of their cost for anyone who may tap in between the start of where the sanitary sewer was actually first connected to their business. We're looking at maybe five or six businesses. Would you agree, Greg, maybe five or six? Oh, there he is. There he is. Would you say it's about five or six?
That is.
Talk with Jared.
Okay, yeah.
Better, be sure not to talk.
We, this is not something we have done quite, probably since 2000, as near as we could figure, and we're not sure why. We think it is a good tool for, for the citizens who are utilizing this. We've talked with Superintendent Crisp, he has no issue with it. He'll be the one that'll be monitoring the addresses for the hookup. And we've talked with Clerk Treasure, obviously, as recoupment fees are gathered, she would be the one redistributing the funds to the, to the recoupie agreements, whoever it is. And if I'm not mistaken, we're looking at between just the town of Beesley's right now, is that we're looking at, or are we going with a 3?
Still two to be determined. There's three different companies or entities out there that are all pitching in for this, putting it up. Come back and forth with what they want. One agreement between Beesley's and the town of Beesley's. Let me introduce my seated guest, Greg Erby.
He's a lawyer on me, Marion Street, is that correct? Yes. But we think it's a great idea, we think it's a good PR tool, if nothing else, to be honest with you. At the end of the day, our wastewater receives additional capital assets in the linear feet of the wastewater pipes, so we think it's a good idea. So we're just looking for consensus to move forward. Some of the things, the reason we don't have an agreement tonight, is we're looking at what the cost for each-
EDU.
EDU. I'm still learning, obviously. So we're looking for the cost of each EDU and seeing, you know, what that agreement will be. And that's really what the sticking point truly is at this point.
I want to sit down with Jared.
Right. Yeah, and that was the big thing, is they're ready to move forward with, with putting down the, the initial sanitary sewer. So we wanted to get this before you, so they can get started in their construction phase, and then we'll work out the specifics, quite honestly, at a later date. Again, I don't think this is going to cost us any heartache whatsoever, and I think it'll be good for the town.
Probably have consensus for them to move ahead?
Yes.
Move ahead.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate you.
All right, we're on a homestretch. Department head reports, starting with building and stormwater.
I know you guys have been in your seats a little while, so I'll try to make this short, but I do have a long list. I know some of you were on the bench when we had our last flood upstairs. We have a new one. It's in the stairwell going to the training room from the police department. I came up Sunday night, I got an email saying, hey, it's leaking. I had been up there once before, but we're, it's a small area, so it's not big, but we're probably going to have to replace that area of the roof. And we're going to have to have access, because I came up here to get on the roof, and there's no way to get on that roof. You need a 32-foot extension ladder, or you got to jump off the second roof onto the first roof. So it's kind of difficult to get to. I couldn't fix the problem, so I'm sorry, Jim. But yeah, so we're going to need to look at that, I'll get some estimates, and then come back before the council. We did have, we have had some issues with fire alarms, that's been corrected. We're now being monitored, monitored full year round, so every day it'll test call. And if we get a failure, it'll email me, notify me, that way I'll know if we have a problem. The cost of that was $500 a year for being fully monitored. Some of the issues were when we, when we moved over to voiceover IP, I think there were some problems there, but it is resolved, and the fire department will know that, knows that it is functioning properly now, so that's taken care of. We did have 14 new single-family residential permits in the last month. So we are growing, and it's, it's been pretty busy, but there's a lot of new houses being built. So we also have repairs in the stormwater side, a lot of repairs out at Commerce Park, if you've been out there. One of the ponds, the out, the outfall pipe, there's a pipe that I think's buried that we can't find, so it's backing up into the ditches. We've corrected part of that, there's still work to be done, but there's, we're making headway with it. We had repairs on Orchard Lane off of Washington Street. There's sinkholes, probably 10 or 15 sinkholes in somebody's backyard. We found a pipe that was not mapped, but it did carry stormwater from the street to the stream, so it's our responsibility to repair it, and we did repair that. There's some grade work and some reseeding that needs to be done. And we have paving repairs all over the town from last year's work. The public works department repaired partially the road on Park Ridge. I appreciate that, Ray, thank you very much. Waiting on the contractor to do the concrete curbs, we've got to do the curbs, and then we'll come back and repave and finish that. We're good, we're asking for help from the public works to repair Washington Street before the Mayberry. So hopefully, they can get that done before then. I don't know if I can get a contractor in here in time to do that. Other than that, I think, I think that's all I have.
Where on Washington Street? South or north?
It's in the first block, it's just south of-
Just south.
It's where we did the repairs as part of the Hendrix Visitors Bureau when they were having flooding and the neighbors were getting their water. I haven't had any complaints of any flooding, so it must have worked, but we have some finishing touch, touch-up work there to do. That's it.
All right, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire department.
Good evening. In front of you, you should have my monthly report. We reported 136 responses for the month of March. Again, nothing remarkable. We're at 412 for the year. I'd be happy to answer any questions on my report. Like I said, there's nothing too remarkable in it.
412 for the year, where does that put us?
We're about right on, right on top.
Any questions, Chief Morgan? Thank you.
I have also been advised that the Hendrix County Fairgrounds will be hosting the Hoosier Horse Fair, May 3rd through the 5th. This is a new event for our fairgrounds. This has been normally held at the Indiana State Fairgrounds, so you can imagine this is a pretty big event. It is anticipated that this time, that the attendance could be around 10,000 attendees.
Oh my, and when was that date?
May 3rd through the 5th.
Going to test that roundabout, huh?
Yes, sir.
Didn't vote for it.
The fire department's working with the fairgrounds for emergency plan. This, we don't think that we'll see much difference in our personal activity for the fire department. It'll, it'll follow, the plan will follow the same guidelines as the fair, the medieval festival, the powwows that they have there. We feel very comfortable that we'll be able to handle this event with minimal difficulty. So, so I wanted to bring that before your attention, because this is going to be a big, big event.
Yeah.
And just want to thank you for your confidence in me. I'll try not to let you down. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Parks and Rec.
All right, in front of you, you have your council report. Just touching base on a couple of things, all summer season, and seasonal staff is hired. We also, our three seasons started, so the grass, we are cutting already. Easter egg hunt, rubber duck race this weekend, starting at 10:30. We are going to be planting about 100 or plus, give or take, trees in Aiken Park here coming up in the next couple of weeks, so we're starting to put the beautiful into Aiken Park. Let's see here, new tables and chairs coming to train station. We teamed up with Police and Fire, this is actually their program, we're just helping them. They did a Police and Fire camp, it filled up in nine hours, which is pretty impressive. So the need is there, kudos to all of them as well, their hard work, I appreciate that. And then the last thing is if Mark and Lisa accept, I'd like to say congratulations to them as well. So, and that's all I got.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. All right, planning. Anything from planning?
That's you.
Okay.
I like that.
Thank, thank you. All right, police.[1764.46]
It filled up in nine hours, which is pretty impressive. So the need is there. Kudos to all of them as well. Their hard work. I appreciate that. And then the last thing is if Mark and Lisa accept, I'd like to say congratulations to them as well. So, and that's all I got.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
All right. Planning. Anything from planning?
That's you.
Okay.
I like that.
Thank, thank you. All right. Police.
Good evening again. Before you guys, I've presented all the stats for the month of March, just real quick. Total runs were slightly up. We had 747 runs. Our total arrests and traffic stops are also slightly up. Try to be real brief tonight because I know it's been a long meeting. I got Brandon Costin with me. He is our parking enforcement author. And for those of you who don't know who he is, he's been with us only a few months. Brandon will be attending the Indiana Law School in the fall and working with us part-time. Just to catch you up on the project I got him working on for us, he's working with the Clerk Treasure, county officials, TAF Law. What we're trying to do is go after some possible income from the county courts. He's been doing a lot of research in this project for us. We're really hopeful that come January or the end of the year, we can tap into some of that income. If you guys have any questions, please contact him. Feel free to. He's done a lot of research, and he can answer any questions that you have. Real quick, Nate Lean, if you'll step up here. I'm going to follow up with the Parks Department. I'd like to thank Chief Mark Morgan and Superintendent Will Lacy for working with the police department on this annual Police and Fire Camp. Nate will real quickly go over this, also, Ray.
Are you going to come back? Are you going to come back?
Yes.
Okay.
So basically, Intern Chief Hilton just asked us to come. We've kind of explained this in an email to the council, but July 1st, 2nd, 3rd, Ray and I, along with Chief Morgan, Intern Chief Hilton, and also Will and Nate, we decided to kind of do this. It was really off of whim to do the Police and Fire Camp. I got ahold of Ray, and Ray basically already had a plan all drawn up. He'd been wanting to do it for a long time. So we kind of put those ideas together within really about a week. We set up this camp for July 1st to the 3rd. We put it out there. Like Will said, it filled up within nine hours. Cost of $20. We got shirts, hats, water bottles, backpacks donated. We've got lunch donated by several different things. We're going to be a, a ton of different events. Chris is going to be there to do his power demo for the kids. We've got, the Lunch Bunch is going to be involved in it. The Danville Fire Department Dive Team's going to be doing stuff. We're going to be doing some CSI stuff. This is going to be a three-day camp. It's going to be from 8:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon. We're going to have a bunch of stuff going on for the kids. And again, like I said, right now we have pizza party by Two Guys Pies. Jimmy John's is providing lunch on the first day. The Lunch Bunch is going to provide lunch for the kids on Tuesday, and we're going to also do a touch truck event with them during that. Stat Flight's going to bring their helicopter in, into the park. Walmart's donated all the t-shirts, about 100 shirts. Rose Promotions doing a bunch of screen printing and stuff for us. The Parks Department's involved. Hendrick's Powers giving their assistance with money and different stuff. St. Vincent's, Stat Flight, York Towing's giving us a car so the fire department can cut it up in front of them and show them how they do their extrication stuff. And then basically, the fire department giving their guys and our guys. We've had a bunch of guys volunteering to come out and help, and it's just going to be a, it's going to be a great event for 32 kids. I think Jenny's kid is going to be involved in it, excited for it. So it's going to be kids between ages nine and 13, and we just think it's going to be fun, so.
Any questions?
What's the age limit?
Nine to 13.
You guys are more than welcome to come out and see what we're doing.
We put that age limit up there, and we did have some people that were like 47.
40.
Yeah, 40 years old's trying to sign up, so.
72.
Yeah.
You guys going to have another donut eating contest?
But we are going to have slayback. One of the firefighters is going to put on the bite suit, and the kids are going to get to watch and bite the firefighters. That's always a good time to watch. So.
We've talked about in the, in the future, if this is something that grows and we can do something else, we still see a bunch of people interested in doing it. We might add a second session or add more kids to it, but for our first year, we didn't
want to overload ourselves, and we kind of wanted to get our feet wet with it, so.
You guys have a contingency for rain?
We do. A lot of it involves the gyms here in this building, inside the train station, inside the, what is that barn called? The Winterland Barn. So we've got, you have that set up, thankfully. Not for the pool, though.
Are they staying overnight there in tents, or they go home?
They go home.
They're going home. 3 o'clock.
Tents.
Yep.
Have a campfire.
It'd be all right. So. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So I had a couple of the people on the square ask about the red truck part.
Yes, I know which one you're talking about.
You know which one?
Yes.
What's the deal on that truck? It makes the town square look a little bit.
So my understanding is that he owns that property, so it's private property. So underneath our parking ordinances, they're currently written, not a lot we can do with that.
He has to go over our sidewalk.
True.
And the curb there, I looked, it's a little bit chewed up.
It'd be something that we could definitely research and look into. I know that we was looking at maybe doing some new ordinance for parking. Brandon has been doing a study for parking, working with, Jim, I believe, has got a commission put together, so that would be something we could probably bring with the parking commission to look at doing something with that, because it does, and I agree with you on that.
And Brandon, thank you. Thank you for getting that ordinance for me the other day. Thank you for getting the ordinance the other day for me about the parking on the median. Thank you.
Any other questions for the police department? Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works.
At the public works, we've been working on the flowerpots, trying to get them ready to start planting flowers so that we can get those put out. We've been doing some patching. We've had some water cuts and some sewer cuts that we're working on. A sidewalk here in Clear Creek that needs repair. We finally got the street sweeper back, and it will be on the street tomorrow morning. We've been updating some signs, and as you've heard with Mark, we have been working with the fairgrounds in the last week heavily with the Hoosier Horse Fair, loading them equipment because we're going to be borrowing equipment from them. A swap here, a swap there. So we will be installing cameras sometime this week for the police department. They have a case they're working on that they need some cameras installed, so we have the bucket truck. In the last several weeks, a lot of my guys have been to some training classes. One that comes to mind that I attended as well was a mock gas line hit. And just like your demonstration with your power, that excavator actually hit a gas line. Some of the guys got to see a dead man laying there, and the police holding the others back from going in, retrieving him, and being victim two and three. So that really hit home to us with all the excavation that we do, so it was some good training. Time well spent. Any questions?
Questions for Ray? Thank you. Wastewater.
Jerry's on vacation, so he asked me if I'd stand in for him tonight. I handed out his report earlier and tried to answer any questions you have about it.
Overflow?
Nope.
Hanging in there. Any questions? Thank you. Last and certainly not least, Water Department.
Well, today was a deadline, so tax day, if you didn't sign up for sprinkle rate, too bad. A couple of things. We finally got the hospital to agree with participating with the tank painting. They're going to, Jenny's going to, I guess, work up a contract for a split payment, just one per year for two years. Mike Nielsen signed the paper that we sent to FEDO, FEDO. They're putting together the insurance package and all their paperwork and bring it back for us to sign for final signing of that, to get that, so they can get that scheduled. Kent Elliott from Banning, we've got the plans and stuff getting ready for the waterline project out on 200. We've already advertised in the paper for bids, and we'll be, hopefully, open those bids up at the next council meeting, May 6th for that. But only look for maybe one or two, because usually with where our standards are, they're pretty tight, so there's not going to be a lot of open bids there. And then we will not require bidding for the labor. I'm going to do price quotes from two or three select people that are specific in boring water mains, so it's specialized type work for some of the stuff. And then that, as far as on the school with the watering out there, how do you guys want to do that? We meter everything, let you know that all town entities are metered, and they do pay a water bill. So this is water that's going to be consumed for various needs, and we keep track of accountable. Do you want it paid accountable, unpaid accountable? But we need to account for it.
What is your recommendation?
I recommend they pay a bill. It'd be a minimum water bill. It's just water only. What's a minimum water bill, Jenny?
25.
25 bucks? Something like that. We'll work, we'll work on that.
You guys will be working with that?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Recommendation?
Okay. Yeah, we do that. I've got some ideas at the school. That current school is.
Waterline runs all the way around it?
The back? Might be able to put a meter on a fire hydrant, do it like that, meter it that way instead of putting something permanent in the ground. We can put a permanent line to them, but just have a line hook up to a hydrant and pull on and off the meter seasonal. So we'll, we'll look at all aspects of that. Another thing, the, first on the housing, listened to a lot of comments. We put all the meters in Towne Danville in the subdivisions. Currently, with all of our mapping and subdivisions that are available, there are no subdivisions with any lots for that price of housing in the Towne of Danville. Everything is higher. You've got Wexford, Woodfield, all those things. So there's no balance like we've had before in a R1, 2, or 3, any of that. I can get you a total of what's available left in the Towne of Danville and the price range that they're at, if you guys are, would entertain that. Get that. So how many meters that are available within the town. So under, for your consideration also, you know, do it like that. But yeah, I've been there. You guys have been there. But we've all been there, I'm sure, at one time or another, trying to get a start and do it like that. But other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions for Jimmy?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have public comment. We have one request to speak from Jim Stevens. Hi, Jim.
Evening. Thank you. Jim Stevens, 392 West Clinton Street, Danville. Keep it quick. We put together a letter regarding some public concerns, sent it out to all the council members last evening, wanted to first verify that everybody did receive that via email. If not, I've got copies. Second, basically, we just are asking, what should we expect as far as a, should we expect a response? What type of response, if so? For. That's my, I know that it was a lengthy, it was lengthy. I'm not, not expecting a whole lot right now, but just want to know what to expect.
I have not read at all. My one concern would be that it was not signed by any one individual. You and Pete, I'm assuming, are the only two that I'm aware of.
Sure. So. Yeah, there's clearly a pretty vast, pretty vast.
If we knew the vastness, that helps.
Sure.
Vast is relative. So I can't answer your question because I don't know whom addressing.
Okay. So what would you like us to do to create something that you would respond to?
Offhand, I don't know. What, what do you want? Yes?
Well, there's, would love to know reasonings and everything behind a lot of things. Like I say, if you haven't read it all, I would obviously suggest you read it all for sure. It'd be very evident.
I'd have to read it first.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we would just love to know, we'll, we'll be around. We'll be in meetings, so we would just love to know at some certain point what type of response and. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just making a note here. I'm not ignoring. Around the horn. Jim?
As far as your question on a donut eating contest, I've been contacted by the Mayberry Festival, and I've got to talk to Chris. I actually shouldn't say I've been contacted by the Mayberry. Red's Donuts is interested in having another donut eating contest between Police and Fire. It's kind of been a longstanding tradition, but we're looking at the Sunday of the Mayberry Festival. I've talked with Intern Chief Hilton. He's in agreement to try and get some volunteers, and I'm sure we'll have no problems either. As Superintendent Whitaker mentioned, it's about time for flowerpots. We are gearing up for them. Our goal this year is to try and do a, basically just one pattern, and then we're going to bring in volunteers to help out and plant that, that pattern. We think it'll be a good community project, to be honest with you. So, and then, again, I appreciate your, your confidence, your faith in me. As a team, we've, we've been discussing that we couldn't have done this without, clearly, but we also couldn't have done it without all the department heads and every employee with the Towne of Danville. If, what we plan to do to say thank you to all of the employees and the department heads who have been so helpful with us, the three of us are going to, at some point, put a date together, and we're going to do a sausage gravy breakfast for all the town employees and invite them into the town hall. And again, just as a way of saying thank you for everything that they've done, helping us get through these last couple of months.
Very nice.
That's all I have.
Okay. Will and Barry?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to Mark. I hope he accepts. And hopefully Lisa accepts, and hopefully we get administrative assistance so that we have a full house. It's been really a difficult time, but with, with these two guys' help and like Mark said, everybody in the town has stepped up when we ask them to. Sometimes we need to ask help. So I just, you know, it's a growing time for me, and I appreciate these two guys more than I ever know. Appreciate the support of the council. Thanks.
Thank you.
There is one other thing, sir.
Oh, that's all right.
We, we did interview administrative assistants last week. We've made a tentative offer to, assume it's okay to mention her name. She's thinking about it at this point, so maybe we better not.
I don't recommend that.
Yeah, she's, she's contemplating the offer, so we'll know. We've, we've asked her to let us know by tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Then we'll announce it.
All right. Anything else? Jenny?
Just congratulations to Lisa and Mark, and I appreciate everything that Will and Barry and Mark and Lisa have done, as well as the department heads and all the employees.
Jim?
Same thing. I just did owe that. It's been a tough three-plus months, and I appreciate everybody's energies and enthusiasm toward solving the problems and moving ahead. Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck. Thank you.
Congratulations, Lisa and Mark, and thank you guys for all you've done, the three amigos. You've done a great job. Nice to come in the town hall and see smiling faces and see it vibrant again, so thank you.
Congratulations, both of you.
Congratulations, both of you.
Me. I hope you both accept. There's a lot of congratulations going on, a lot of assumptions on everybody's part, but if you could contact Jenny with your response, I think that's the most prudent way to go, and, and good luck. I have a little. Let me finish my meeting, okay? Number one, community cleanup, 427. You should have got this in your water bill. This is a great way to help clean up our community. Take advantage of it if you can. Secondly, today is Tax Day. You have until 11:59 tonight. Get those taxes in. HBO helper brother out here, we can use your tax money. Shameless plug for my government classes, they're having a candidates night on May 1st at 6:30. This will be a slightly different style, where the candidates will be, have an opportunity to make a statement, and then my students have created a series of questions for the candidates. We will have an intermission where we will serve light snacks, and then we'll go back